Called to order the Bucksport Town Council Budget Meeting, Thursday, March 23rd, 2017. Roll call. Joey Mark?
Here.
Paul Rabbs?
Here.
David Key is absent. David Keane is absent. Peter Stewart's here. Paul Govan is on his way and Robbie Carmichael is hopefully on his way here. Okay, we're gonna have a budget overview and I believe Town Manager Susan, you have a PowerPoint for us?
Yes, and right before we start the budget meeting, I just wanna send a message out to TV and computer land that six o'clock this evening, the Bucksport High School Unified Basketball Team is playing for the state championship in Winslow. They won the Northern Maine Championship and now they are competing for the state title in Winslow against a team from Lisbon. So we just wanna send out good wishes to the Unified Basketball Team from Bucksport this evening and hope that they bring the gold ball back home. So...
Thank you.
On to the, yes, go Bucks, on to the budget. So, um, this PowerPoint talks about the goals, what the proposed budget does, what it doesn't do, what its challenges are. Obviously, there, one of the budget goals was no mill rate increase to maintain service, to continue a review of our operations for efficiencies. In 2016-17, there were some changes made. They went to and kept a part-time town manager, did not replace the finance director, did not replace the highway foreman position and instead hired a driver laborer position. We changed recycling to a zero sort system, which, when we go through that budget, you'll see how much that has, is going to save the community moving forward. The Highway Department is taking over the solid waste hauling again, which is going to be a cost savings for the town. We reorganized the police vehicle replacement schedule from a four vehicle to three. We are in the process of considering contracting of recreation services with the YMCA. The council will be making that decision at its first meeting in April. And we're combining the Marina, waterfront, walkway and town docks under the supervision of the Economic Development Director. And there's some budgetary changes that go along with that as well. Some of the revenue impacts to this budget. Our vehicle excise tax continues to grow. We had increased at $80,000 last year and will be increasing in another estimated $20,000 this year to add to the revenue from that source. Revenue sharing from the state, however, is predicted to go down. We were budgeted for $324,500 last year. The current budget for this community from the state is $300,000. That's still in flux. I don't believe it will go lower than that. We can only hope it would return to the $324,500, but we're going with a lower number just in case it doesn't. As I've mentioned before, our county tax bill went down $95,000 and that was related to the county catching up to our current valuation. And capital reserves in our 16-17 budget were increased to make up for the fact that there were no, no reserves done in 2015-16. So they have been reduced back to a more normalized amount in the 17-18 budget proposal. An error in the school funding warrant last year resulted in the town, this year, paying $164,599 in, less in school costs for 16-17 than we raised and appropriated for that purpose. So we're going to have a carried balance in that school account of $164,599 and we will be carrying that forward to offset the increase in the school budget that's proposed for this year. And finally, the homestead exemption is scheduled to increase to $20,000 from $15,000 for main resident owner occupied properties, which will result in an additional tax reduction of $82.50 over the $247.50 reduction for 2016-17. So with no change in the mill rate and no change in any of that, people with a homestead exemption would see their property tax bills drop $82.50 more due to that $5,000 additional exemption for homestead. So the town receives state monies that are applied as revenues to offset property taxes. And, and the first one is the homestead reimbursement. The state pays for half of that. And this year, they're gonna be paying for 62.5% of it because they raised that additional 5,000 and the 62.5 keeps it, keeps the towns paying the same as they would have otherwise. Betty is business equipment tax reimbursement. That's another state program that the town receives based on eligible equipment located in the community. State revenue sharing, as I showed, is, is $300,000 this year. Veterans reimbursement is a portion of the veterans exemptions that are granted. The town gets reimbursed for a portion of that from the state. And finally, tree growth reimbursement, which is a reimbursement from the state of a portion of property taxes lost because property is listed in tree growth and taxed at a lower rate. So our total state revenue is used to offset taxation in Bucksport of $540,584. In this year's budget, I'm proposing to use $350,000 of fund balance, which is the unappropriated monies that the town has to use to offset taxation. That amount will be offset by the proposed overlay for this budget as well as a portion of unexpended funds from the 2016-2017 budget in order to leave the, the total unappropriated fund balance at approximately $6 million, which is the town's goal for that since the mill closed and the two million of the eight million was used. The goal has been to retain that six million in the event of other issues. And finally, the overlay for the 2017-18 gross budget is estimated at 2.5%. State law allows the town to assess that at between zero and five percent. So we have, many budgets have revenue offsets in addition to state funding and, and fund balance. Administration, the general government budget has a total expense budget of $1,528,041. Its revenue offsets are excise tax, auto registrate, boat excise, auto registration fees, tax lien costs, fees that the clerk brings in, miscellaneous income, which are, is generally, there's an anomaly a year that comes through the door that has no other location. Copier fees, fees paid to the planning board, fees paid, paid to the code enforcement officer and plumbing fees. There's a portion of excise tax. 10% of the amount of excise tax we receive is, is used as an offset to administration because the front office is where the registrations are done, all these that collect this excise tax. The TIF revenue offset is an offset used from your TIF revenues that is used to offset the cost of your economic development, direct, part of your economic development director's salary plus the appropriation to the Chamber of Commerce. That generally is where that goes. Cable TV revenues are funds received from Time Warner and its Form One that are sent to us based on the number of, of cable TV users, not internet. People have internet, just cable TV users. We receive that on an annual basis. Interest received from people who pay taxes late, investment interest on the town's money for total revenue offset of $301,681. And as it explains in this sheet, general government includes many things. Administration, planning, assessing the municipal building costs, all employee benefits for all town employees and all departments, all liability insurances for the town, the public access channel, the contingency account and economic development are all part of administration. Fire and ambulance, the, the total budget for those, that combined department is $591,291. Their revenue offsets are $504,000 because we have, we have agreements with neighboring communities who pay us subsidies for coverage for both fire and ambulance. And then we collect ambulance fees in the neighborhood of $432,000 a year. So after revenues are applied in fire and ambulance, the, the cost to the community is $87,291 and it's actually somewhat less than that because these bottom lines do not include the application of fund balance or the state revenues as offsets. That's done at the very end. We'll get there. But for revenues generated locally, this is where, where you end up.
Can you go back, I'm sorry, can you go back real quick to the previous offsets, the income? When you talked about net amount to come from taxation, general government includes administration planning assessing. All employee benefits, does that include police and fire also?
Everybody's, it, all of the benefits paid to all of the employees are under an account in general government called insurances and benefits and that's all under the general government. It's a $900,000 item.
Okay.
So that's...
But when, and I think what I wanna get is when people see the overall budget and each of those are broken down, those numbers for, for wages are included all total in that $900,000. It's not, we're not, we're not missing something someplace, right?
No, the, the Bucksports budget practice is not to include benefit costs under individual budgets like police and all of their retirement, health, et cetera. All of those benefits are carried in an insurance and benefits line item under general government as opposed to that. So fire, ambulance includes all the wages and supplies, materials, et cetera. It doesn't include the benefits that are part of them.
So their total, total budget, like fire, is $87,000 is roughly, that comes from tax payer money?
Eighty-seven, from, well, no, it's less than that because that eighty-seven at the bottom is only after you apply local revenues, not including fund, targeted revenues that, that are generated because you have this service. You have these fees because you provide these services. If you didn't provide the services, that, that money would, the revenues would not be there.
Right, but the bottom line is the eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven, and, but then there's, there is $584,000 in state revenues that we have and the $300,000, $350,000 in fund balance that, at the end of this presentation, it shows it, but all of these numbers make up the total. And then whatever percentage of that total they are, those additional revenues are applied against them in that same percentage. And that's how we get to how, how big or small a bite of the property tax rate they are.
Perfect.
Okay?
One last. The fire ambulance department, is that one of the, the largest revenue generating assets that we have of a sort or?
Public Works, Highway is at $780,000 in excise tax, which is a, a tax that was created for the purpose of offsetting the costs of roads, streets and roads care in your community. And so Public Works has a revenue offset of $780,000 from that source plus an additional $65,000 from local road assistance monies that are paid, so. Public Safety Building doesn't have any offset, but that's the cost of maintaining the public safety building. All of these budgets have breakdowns that, that take this big lump and show what all of its individuals and that, that overall budget is also posted on our website under the budget information on the front page under the news, along with this PowerPoint. Police and dispatch, the total budget is $697,155 and there, that also includes the animal shelter. But our dispatch subsidy per contract, our revenue is for reports and part of the cost of the school resource officer at, for a total of $63,000 with a net of $634,155. Here's Highway. The, the proposed Highway budget and Town Garage budget total $1,031,000 with 90% of excise tax being applied, highway block rent and the fees. The total offsets are $783,000, leaving a net of $248,632.
That's perfect.
Transfer station, this is a, I, I really like this budget this year. Last year, this budget was over $300,000 and this year, this budget is $261,287. Recycling revenue is, is only metal. That's all we have left for that. Our fees that we charge, 36. Rebates, we have another year of rebates from the MRC through this year. We have subsidies with Orland through this year for a total revenue offset of $158,000, leaving a net of $103,287, which is excellent for a community of almost 5,000 people to have that as your bottom line on your trash budget.
So if I look at this, $117,000 of our revenues are gonna go away next year?
The MRC.
And the Orland? Well, the solidway subsidies, $84,000?
The solidways, it, when Orland goes, as I continue to tell them, the, the door is open and their, their costs with us are going down because our costs are going down. So when the tipping fee also goes down from where it is proposed to be to what it will be next. The budget's gonna come down. Some of the fees are gonna go away.
So they, they actually still have a chance to come with us?
They could, they're not, I don't believe tied to anything yet, but...
If they don't, though, they'll be 300 tons.
Less that we're processing. So that one way or another, it's gonna, it's gonna stay stable or come down. But much of this is, is related to what the council's done this year in zero sort and the highway crew taking, taking on the transport of waste and all that makes a big difference in, in what we're gonna be doing and how we're gonna be doing it, so. Okay, recreation. I have used the recreation with the Y component in it only because that's a budget number that I, I have in front of me right now. The council's making this decision on April 9th and my belief is that whatever decision you make, it's gonna be pretty close to that. This recreation budget also includes the senior center rental and the senior center director and, and the costs associated with those things. It no longer includes the maintenance of the walkway chargers. That's under the town dock slash walkway, which is the taxation component of where we're going with the waterfront management plan. So the town dock budget is higher than it was last year because it has incorporated the costs of the maintenance of the walkway.
So, but the town dock is listed right here?
That's right. Town dock, it's, in the overall budget, it's called town dock slash water, walkway.
Okay.
Yeah, which is the, we're gonna have two pieces of one budget. One is the taxation piece, which is this one, and then the Marina, which is the enterprise account, which is gonna remain an enterprise account for that.
Okay, thanks.
Just so you can track what that's generating for you separately and apart from what you're doing with tax dollars on the waterfront. So you have mooring fees, recreation subsidies, which are not part of the revenue that would go away under the Y. Those are subsidies that we receive from other communities, not from program fees. The diversion grant and contract of 37 to 20 covers the cost of the person who operates that. Half it comes now from diversion, the other half will come from contract fees for a total revenues of $49,354, leaving a net to be raised of $192,211. Community and social agencies have not yet been submitted. That, those budgets are heard in the middle of April and I, they're not all in. So what is plugged in here is what you, what you approved last year so that there would be a, a way to not leave a big hole here that would make it look like it artificially went down.
Sue, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is, is also plugged in here the two that we recently approved? Or is that for them to do?
That came out of the last budget.
That came out of this last one. They have to, they have to apply for this and they, and I have not received that yet, so I don't have that. And capital or equipment reserves, last year, we, we appropriated $460,000 to make up for the fact that we had been behind and, because we skipped a year. So we don't have to do that this year. So this is a list of accounts that would be receiving an input of reserve funding to stay consistent with where our replacement schedules lead to go. Utilities, streetlights, $45,125 and hydro rentalists, slightly higher. We all got something saying the water is going up and it's going up. So it's not a rate increase, but there's a surcharge of some type that works into approximately a one and a half percent increase. So this, this number's up.
Is that paid to main water? Is that who runs the water?
Yes. Okay, the proposed school budget for Bucksport from the superintendent is $4,578,046,21 and that $164,599, it was, is left over because they couldn't bill us for it this year. It's gonna be used as an offset, meaning that we will have to raise if the budget stays as they presented it, $4,413,447,20, which I believe is a 3.47, or, or it's a 3 point something percent increase in their budget, but that's their first number. The school superintendent will be here at your meeting on the 30th to talk to you, like he always comes to talk to you about.
That's a, a 3.3 increase?
Three, it's a, I happen to have that number on the last page.
Would the offset for us is not, not?
No, their, their increase is 3.58% in their budget and that's, we're just using part of what was left over from last year to offset that. So the bottom line is that the municipal budget is $5,033,559 with revenue offsets of $2,769,864, leaving a net to be raised from taxation of $2,263,695. The county tax is $186,625. The school budget, after you apply the revenue offset, is $4,413,447. And the overlay, which is the amount that we talked about before, that goes to rebuild reserves, leaving a total to be raised of $7,108,347. The amount raised from taxation in 2015-16 was $7,397,406. The amount raised in 2016-17 was $7,78,770. Prior to review, the taxation cost of this proposed budget is $29,577 more than 2016, but still $289,059 lower than the 15-16 tax commitment. And that is because even though this budget as proposed is, 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 is... The, the municipal budget as proposed is 2.69% lower than, than the prior year's budget. However, revenues as an offset for municipal revenues are down 2.46%. So the, the difference between that and the increase in the school budget puts it up slightly. But that $29,577 would not impact the mill rate and there would be no need for mill rate increase if this budget is adopted. So I apologize that the numbers are not in line. They are in the PowerPoint version, but not in the Google version, which is what happens when you translate it. And this is just to give people an idea, if, based on a $100,000 property, if your property was valued at $100,000 and the mill rate was 16.50, what your taxes would pay for? They'd pay for $202.95 to administration and that laundry list of items that was there. $14.85 would be your cost for fire and emergency medical service. Police and dispatch would cost $102.30 of your tax bill. Highways and the town garage would cost $41.25. The transfer station, $19.80. Recreation and the town dock waterfront, $31.35. The public safety building, $6.60. Utilities, streetlights and fire protection, $42.90. And GA, the health officer and debt service are all very small amounts. I combined them, that's a total of $3.30 on here. Social service agencies, $11.55. Capital improvements, the reserves, $44.55. Cemetery, the TIF use and uncategorized expenses, which is a subcategory of tips, would be $6.60. Education, $1,023. County tax, $42.90. And the overlay, the, that goes to build reserves would be $56.10, bringing to your total tax bill of $1,650. This is just, just to give people an idea of, at the end of the day, based on what we had taken for revenues that offset some of these accounts, the actual cost for the service is different than what it appears. And this is your tax dollar breakdown, the final one, which is the municipal. School is at 62%. County is 2.6 and municipal's 35.4. So that is, that's the overall general fund budget. That's gonna be discussed over the next several weeks. As I said, the, the breakdown under each budget, that budget is also posted on the town's website. And what you will find under each of the budget meeting date items on the website is each, the sub-account of each budget that's gonna be discussed is posted on that particular date so that if you're, you're coming to a meeting, are you gonna watch on TV, that you can open those up and, and go through them along with us if you want. And they're on, on the same date that the meeting is so that that would be... on, on the same date that the meeting is, so that that would be easier to find. And all of those were, the first several dates are already posted, the rest are in the process of being there. So I look forward to reviewing this budget and happy to answer any questions.
You know, I, I look back, I'm looking back at years that you have posted back to twenty-fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen sixteen, which was our low point, and some of the things that we took out of the budget back then were paving, some tree plantings, and things that, that mattered to the town at the time that we realized we couldn't pay for, they were nice to haves, but the bottom line is, we're, we're less than two hundred thousand dollars from, from our low point to where we are today for where our budget is, so as far as the municipal side, so we got, hopefully we got past where we were at, you know, with, with the devastation of the mill shutting down, and our budget is still in line, you know, it's, it's a million dollars less than what it was the year before the mill closed down. So we, we, I think we've done pretty
Yeah, I used the analogy before, we were looking at aspirins, now we're doing aspirins as well as vitamins on the town again. We've really
Yeah, I mean, being able to fund things that we had to cut is, and not raise the mill rate is, is great.
Well, some of the things that, that you've done, what I always call course corrections as opposed to cliff jumping, are having the effect that you want. Solid waste is, is an example of that, that forty-eight thousand dollars over a period of years adds up to real money, and these, some of the things that, that you've done that are avoiding costs mean they're not in your budget, so.
Is there, is there a limit on what the town can charge the taxpayers for the school budget at all? I know we're at sixty-two percent, but
The, the school budget has its own board and its own everything, but the town
The town votes on the school budget.
The town votes
It's a separate thing, so
The, the town, the council
Doesn't have to do with
No, no, they have
The residents vote on it, and whatever the residents adopt as the budget after the validation process is the, we get a bill. And we got a bill last year, and the bill was a certain amount, and then we got a call later that we, that couldn't be the bill because the warrant wasn't right, and so it was less, so we paid less than we appropriated, and that money is sitting there and gives us a little cushion against next year's budget. But there's no, there's no, no whatevers.
Okay. I mean, as a taxpayer, you look at this and you, wait a second, all of a sudden, again, I, I would, I would, I would pay twice as much for some of these, some of like the fire department, I mean, it's fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents out of my, that I pay per year for the fire department, of course, I, I would definitely love to double that, but, but my, my
I understand what you're saying, you homeschool your kids. I mean, that's
Yeah.
That, I mean, that's, me personally
Yeah.
I'd pay more. And, and I don't have a kid in the school.
A, as do many taxpayers, of course.
I mean, I
I guess my question is, is, I remember when I got my first tax bill on my, on my property, but this was, this was years ago, of course, don't get me wrong, but it was fifty-five percent, and I was like, wow, that's a lot, you pay for, for taxes for a school system, and I just was wondering, I was just kinda asking, and maybe we could hear it from
Well, the state, the state hasn't met their obligation either on, on funding education. They're supposed to be funding at fifty-five percent, and that's continuously gone down since they did, so that, that affects what we have to contribute, but the state's not contributing.
Right, and the federal government was supposed to get involved with that as well, right?
With special ed
Special ed, yeah, and they do.
But they haven't met their obligation yet either?
Nobody's met their obligations, and that's
Except for us.
And, and we're bound to, you know, but you go, and you go back and you look back again before, the year before the mill shut down, the school budget was six point four million.
Yeah.
And now they're down to four and a half million. You know, and I realize there was a two million dollar offset from the, from the, from the severe and sudden severe act, but still
Yeah. The local share, our local share has gone down correspondingly with the, with the valuation loss, but
And again, this is first blush from the school department, too.
Yeah.
They, that, you know, there is a, there is a process in place, and, and I'd say, but when I was on the school board, apathy showed up when you had thirty people voting on a seven million dollar budget.
Yeah, same here.
I mean, that's crazy.
Yeah.
You know?
My, my question comes from other, even other towns that share the school budget with us now, and that's kinda, I, I'd like to get the conversation going so that they can hear what we had, how it, how it comes about this way as well, so that's kinda my, my, my goal, is to try to be able to explain to them when they ask me, how come it's going up and why not.
Well, there, there, I don't know if, if it's an even split as far as appropriations, there, Orleans is not gonna be a sixty-two percent or sixty, no.
It all depends on what
On the, on the number of students you have and, and all those things, so it's not any, it's not, Orleans may not be sixty-two, or whatever, whatever it was there.
Sure.
You know, Verona won't be that. It's based on the number of students that you send in the special education budgets and
And like we always talked about before, the more towns that get involved with RSC twenty-five reduces this amount?
Maybe.
Maybe, okay.
All depends on what happens
We still got cost
to the district
Right, there's still cost
The cost of the district go up, but the sixty-two percent is the percent of the tax dollar that you raise. It may not be the percent of the, excuse me, is that door out there?
Yes, it's unlocked.
Okay, thank you, excuse me.
I went through it, sorry.
For the audience watching at home, we have people coming by, I wasn't sure the door was open on the outside. Of the amount of money that the town raises, sixty-two percent of it is school, it, that doesn't mean that, that sixty-two percent of the school, it, it's how it works out and what comparison to what we raise. If the town chose to spend more money at the local level on local services, it would drive down the sixty-two percent because it would be a bigger number. You see what I mean?
Right.
But the path we're taking is not that path, it's to look at, at not making government bigger, but providing services in ways that can hopefully show efficiencies over time. So, so part of the reason that's so big is that you, you're trying not to expand other services.
Other things, correct.
Thank you.
All right, any questions, anybody out there from, about the budget overview before we go on to the next item?
I just have one more.
Yep.
Uh, TIF, like, TIF offsets, how many, do we have people still for that, or is that just left over?
There are, there, you have
Yeah, no problem.
You have two tips remaining, very small ones,
Okay.
but you have a little over seven hundred thousand dollars in the TIF account that's an accumulated amount, that a percentage is being used as an offset to economic development. At this rate, there's twelve or so years that we could
Okay.
Do this, so
And nothing says we don't
And the hope is that within that period of time, that we're generating something else.
Business, okay.
Correct.
All right, if I don't hear anything else, we will, oh.
Just, I don't know if I understood or, or if you, this is what you said, but you were, were talking about the hundred and sixty-four thousand and some odd hundred, that was offset from the, the school last year, it was different, you said we're gonna use a portion of that?
All of it, it's gonna move forward to
So that, that amount was a hundred and sixty-four?
One sixty-four five ninety-nine.
Okay, I thought it was higher than that.
Last year
Yeah.
they did the same thing, last year, well, not the same thing, last year in the fifteen, sixteen budget, the school got more from the state than they thought they were going to, they sent back a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and so we use that in this year's budget as an offset. And then with the error in the warrant, we're gonna have a hundred and sixty-four five ninety-nine left in the school establishment, that we can just move forward
How are we into the project?
to help pay for next year without raising that
So we're not doing general, how did I get into general?
Okay.
Well, let's, go back.
All right, anything else? All right, so now we're going to department budgets, first one under streets and roads is the highway department.
Davey down there, thinking
What's that?
David, I was thinking
Oh, he's Florida.
I don't know how I can make that any clearer, because when I make it that big, it gets not very clear.
Highway.
Highway, yeah, the streets and, yeah.
I can't see it at that rate.
Six pages?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we need that bigger.
Yeah.
Chris, I'll speak to our IT person, ask him if there's anything we can do to improve this, because it's not very clear.
He's on his way.
I can make it bigger, but is it gonna still be that out of focus?
It's a scan, so the quality, if we had the original, do you wanna start? Where's the original saved on your computer? It's a scan, so it's limited to certain resolution.
Well, we may have to
Now, we'll get you a little bit for right now, if you wanna start reading off your screen for a minute, I can go send the other ones down.
You can't send them because they're
Okay.
They're often, I don't mean that they're lost, I just mean that they're
Uh-huh.
they're in my two thousand seventeen eighteen budget file upstairs, which is well, we'll start, I'll talk.
How, I mean, if you make it smaller, does it, does it make it look that much worse on, on the TV? I mean, if you made it smaller and clearer?
I can't pull anything up on the TV.
Well, actually, if you wanna just wait just a minute, I'll, I'll put these on Google Drive so that I can, it'll only take me a minute, if I can, I can put Word documents up so that they're, we'll do that.
I, I just, I just don't do that because there's probably a lot of people watching this, so
Yeah, that's fine.
The original
And you can talk to Jay about what they're working on.
Jay, what's exciting and new in the, in the, in the streets and ways and highway department?
Mud season's exciting for me.
Yeah, I bet.
That's top of my list right now.
The road, the roads look like they've taken a beating this winter.
Yeah, yeah, we've had an exceptional year with fluctuation temperatures, I think has really accentuated the frost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's, there's really been a lot of areas that have wiped out early because of the warmer temperatures, but there have been areas that have been worse than normal.
It's amazing how forty-six has just turned into a catastrophe, you know, as much work as was put into that.
I, I think a lot of that, you mean, out of the long bomb area, I think a lot of that is related to the point three.
The runoff and stuff coming in, yeah.
I don't think it was nearly what it should have been when they did it originally. They didn't count for as much water
Coming down off that hill, yeah.
It saturates the road, the base.
That's true, because the rest of forty-six didn't, didn't have any of that.
You know, the stuff that they did in the last couple of years, I mean, it's holding pretty good.
Now, Peter, with some of what you're talking about, on ninety-seven on the streets and ways, it talks about the pavement
Yes.
paving the roads.
Yep.
Remember when Dwayne was talking to us a little bit about it, he said that we're not even doing, like, we're doing less than like twenty-five percent, we weren't ever gonna be able to catch up if we didn't pave more roads, is that? Do you remember that conversation a little bit, or something? He said we're less than
I do, I I, I wasn't
It was less than It was less, less than fifty is what I remember saying, so we don't think we're gonna have to catch up, if, if we didn't add money to this portion of it.
Yeah.
Because the, the town used to spend considerably more
Well, I mean, you look just a couple of years back, and we're at a quarter of a million dollars, you know?
Right.
And then we had the, then when the mill closed down, we basically got it down kind of in half.
There was one year where there was almost
Yeah, we cut, we, yeah.
To try to
Do that all back at once?
Normally, but try to, you can, I don't know if we'll ever catch up exactly unless there's huge amounts on time limits, but if that directly affects the condition of the roads in the winter, if there's overlays more often, you have the less cracks, you have less, you know, assault getting in and whatever, I think it would certainly help if in the future the possibility is there to increase that.
Well, and I think, you know, taking everything into play when you take solid waste or save it from there, looking, you know, a year or two down the road where we're gonna be, I think there's gonna be an opportunity to maybe fill in some of these gaps that we had from, from a couple of years ago.
And, and hard to say, I mean, the prices of fuel have been pretty stable.
Yeah.
So we might get a really good price again this year for
Yeah, price of oil, price of oil is still way down.
Yeah, so I mean, we
Price of paving product should be good.
It is right.
I don't think it was this cheap last year, was it?
No, last year it was, I think it was ten dollars or more in time higher.
Yeah.
I don't remember it yet, this year sixty dollars, I think, sixteen some change in time, I think it was up, I mean, someplace. But, no, I, I talked to the contractor that kept me in to the house, and when we had him come in to put the new pavement in Heritage Park, he goes, oh, yeah, I remember that, and he goes, I do still owe you some pavement, he goes, I lost my shirt, yeah, I was like, I didn't have anything to do with it, I said, you submit it for
Right.
And he was, he was just giving me a hard time.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said they were really aggressive on that because we were willing to pave a little early.
Right. Somebody could get started and go, yeah.
Pricing, so
Yeah, that's right, yeah, 'cause
Yeah.
Right.
That's right, 'cause he was, that was
You paid, you paid back.
Yeah.
We did all of our annual paving for this year back then.
We might still have snow in May.
Right, yeah, hard to say.
I believe
It's been
I was on that Florida trip, my laptop was fifty-one degrees, mine was eleven.
Yeah.
Was not good.
Uh, it's what I heard on the radio, two thousand twelve, and eighty
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight degrees, yeah.
Yeah, that was the year, wife, I went to Alabama to visit family, it's eighty-four degrees, I get a cough, one of the guys at work, he's like, we all got sunburns because we're felt American in the sun.
Right. It's crazy. I can't wait for next year's trip.
Good time.
Oh, it was a blast, I watched fifteen baseball games, three pro game, uh, three pro games and twelve, uh, college games, and Jake only played eight, so I watched some other teams.
Yeah.
Very successful trip.
Is it restful?
It was, actually, man, I enjoyed it, I had not a, not a care nor, just to sit, you know? Watched teams, I'll, well, I'll probably see him next year, but I would have never seen him, you know?
Yeah.
Well worth it.
Spring's coming, I hope to do the same.
Yeah, he's got a game sadly, I would have to wear his normal boots soon. They clean the field off today.
Yeah, I was, they cleaned off for a while, they have grass down there.
Yeah. That, that was Jake's practice there.
Yeah. Is this gas prices on here, I know we jumped ahead, but is that, has that been established or is that a guess?
Well, that was, we were going off this year's
Okay.
price, and considering things have been pretty stable, that's what we wanted. I think we increased it a little bit to be safe, but I think it's pretty consistent.
I appreciate everybody bearing with us. Technology's a great thing. Didn't get any clarity.
Sorry if that works, I, I might have said a couple.
I know.
Can we just make that whole thing bigger on the screen? Can we just make that whole thing bigger on the screen?
This goes bigger by moving this.
There we go.
Oh, so that's bigger up there, and that you can zoom, we should be in business now. How's that look?
Thank you. My apologies to everyone. I've learned my lesson. We will now use Excel files instead of PDFs when we're doing this. So, the, the highway budget, um, I don't know, you've already talked to...
We were just...
Chatting?
Spending time, yep.
Okay, the, um, we have the salaries line item, um, which covers all of our full-time, our part-time, summer, and then, there is also, including overtime, and there's also an line item amount in for summer, Main Street mowing and roadside maintenance. We've had a number of complaints about Main Street and the way that it's been maintained the past several years in terms of keeping the weeds pulled and the downtown area cleaned up more. We're going to focus on that, um, this year, and this also includes the cemetery maintenance costs that we have for the ones that we do for that. The, um, there's the clothing allowance. Each employee has a six hundred dollar clothing allowance for the eight employees of the department. Dues and travel, um...
On the clothing allowance, that looks like it's about a twenty-five, thirty percent increase. Was that just a con... Clothing allowance looks like...
Yes, that was the...
Contractual?
They're, they're, in the contract that was negotiated, that six hundred dollar clothing allowance is now consistent across police, fire, and public works in terms of it. Because the cost of steel-toed boots left very little else left for them to have anything. Dues and travel, um, for the Public Works Association and any mileage that, um, they have to, that they would get paid for, for traveling to either go get parts or to attend a training, et cetera. The training line item allows the crew and Jay to attend MDOT programs. They did one this year. It also will allow them to attend, um, the Highway Congress, the Highway Rodeo in Skowhegan, which is in the beginning of June every year, that, um, highway departments from all over the state go to. There are lots of vendors there, but it's an opportunity for people who do that work to, um, have a day of getting together and some training. There's competitions, it's a great event, and it will allow them to participate in that. Office supplies, obviously, are for the director's office. Minor equipment purchases, those, these items are consistent with prior years. Equipment rental, this line item is higher, and it's higher because the contract for Route forty-six, when we did the budget last year, we budgeted at the old rate because the budget was done before we did the contract of the new year. And so, last year's budget contained a lower number for the contract than we actually paid. And so, this year, the, meaning that that line item is overdrawn this year, but in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, but in order to pay the appropriate contracted amount, this is the, the amount that needs to be in the budget. It's within five percent of what we paid last year, anyway. Equipment, parts and repair, um, even though we're very close on this year, that, this year, may, due to a couple of significant repairs, may go slightly over. It's being budgeted at, for the same amount because we now have, um, extended warranties on our equipment that were not in place in prior years, and some of the extra costs that we've had to pay for repairs are, in this, the past couple of years, have been due to the fact that the town didn't purchase extended warranties on equipment that it intended to keep beyond the warranty period. And we've done that in the last several purchases and intend to continue to do that so that you don't get hit in the last couple of years of life of a vehicle with big expenses. Telephone is the cell phone cost for, um, two of our people. The, the fuel cost...
Was that, was that one before, is that why it's gone up?
Yes, we have two. We have, um, Matt and Jay have, both have cell phones.
Yeah, they're pretty useless, the data.
It's been pretty handy this winter to be able to check whether the emergency radar is considering.
The vehicle fuel, we've left at the same, that, that bid for fuel, we have not put out yet. We, that will be in the next couple of months. Very advantageous. We have not used all of that fuel money this year. I'm, I'm leaving it sitting there at, at this point until we get the, we get the bids back before the final budget is adopted, and we can adjust it down with somewhat, we will, but we, we've been very fortunate the past two years with fuel prices, and, and so that again is staying pretty normal.
Just real, and just for my curiosity, how much do you, how many gallons do you normally run on a snowstorm, you know, for? Have any idea?
I don't know where you're off the top of my head, but the, the trucks all fuel once at least per storm. If it's a, say, a twelve-hour or something. Yeah, they can usually do their runs.
They, they're giving six miles to the gallon on average. Some of the old ones are doing a little worse. I think the brand-new truck is doing eleven miles to, eleven gallons to a run.
Eleven gallons to a run?
To a run, and I believe it runs sixteen miles.
Thanks.
Glad I don't drive that car.
Well, those miles are pretty hardly...
Yeah, they are. Right.
The miscellaneous is, um, we're required to participate in alcohol and drug testing, um, for all of our, it's a random choice program. Registration fees and, um, and miscellaneous as a miscellaneous if it doesn't fit under any other account. Gravel and sand, um, at eight and seven, the winter sand is not five, it's seven. We put up only a thousand yards that we mix, and the primary use of that is the dirt roads that, because salt just turns those to mush. Salt, um, is, is up, but, and I'll tell you why. Because we've been spending this amount of money every year and budgeting, for some reason, for twelve hundred yards. But if you look back across that, across the overall sheet on, um, the face sheet on this, you'll see that in fourteen, fifteen, you paid a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for salt, and in fifteen, sixteen, a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen. Because we're actually using sixteen hundred, not the amount that's, and, and this is consistent if you go back prior to this too. I'm, I'm unsure why it was budgeted that way, but...
It's more we...
But, but there's no sense in budgeting it in a way that you're, that it just overdraws that line item every year so that it looks like a smaller number. That's...
That's money we don't have to spend. That's money we don't have that we can, that to spend.
Well, it, it also cuts into, requires other things in the budget that mean you can't do things that you were going to do because you've overdrawn a line item that you knew wasn't gonna be that number in the first place. So, this is our attempt to address that as an issue. Street signs, obviously, um, for what we replace. Culverts and erosion control, which is, um, what we use when we're gonna do paving, if we're gonna do culvert replacement or those kind of things in a, in a, before we pave the roads. Guardrails, there's a guardrail project similar to the one we did last year, um, on Silver Lake Road that, um, needs to be done, so that, that will, that is the, what that one is earmarked for.
Did you say tug it or guardrails?
Guardrails, I'm sorry.
Is that done by the water measure?
No, it's, uh, I'll, I'll put a power line crosses between the O and...
Power line?
There's been cars using that as a lead.
Yeah.
They're pretty beat up.
Um, the, the paving request for this year is, um, includes Bucks Mills, Miles Lane, Jacob Buck Pond Road, Mill Vale Road, Silver Lake Road, um, and the final quote on the Heritage Park Road, which you knew before. If we get a really advantageous paving price, like we did last year, I may ask to use some money from reserves for a bit more to get us to a two hundred thousand dollar level, to keep us there.
That's what we were talking, that's what we were talking about where you were yelling and screaming.
Yeah, but we, Jay and I have talked about that too, and I said, we'll see what kind of a paving price we get before we dedicate more, but that's the purpose. Now, the next one, don't have a heart attack, why would it say twenty-two thousand dollars when it said nineteen hundred dollars last year? It's about trees. And it, it's about removing trees that are on a long list, and I don't mean ditching for trees. I mean trees that are in residential neighborhoods that are all approaching the same age at the same time and becoming hazards, and they're in our right of way. And we've talked about whether nineteen hundred dollars is gonna get us anywhere before something happens where one of our trees falls on something that's gonna cost us more than nineteen hundred dollars to compensate for, or if we do a contract that takes care of the backlog to get a better price, and then are caught up to move forward.
Did we ever get all the trees out of, uh, oh, shoot. Yeah.
Yes, we completed, I would say, basically, and that's, we spent all that money that we set aside and, you know, we have to be done with the trees at that time.
Does this, or do you, do you have any thoughts on what we've talked about in the past? Does this include cleaning up this walkway with all this burnt ox and bamboo and everything down along in between properties, between the Main Street and the walkway, or is this...
That usually happens within, within the, uh, regular maintenance.
I'm, I'm talking like down by Sawyers with those big clumps of, I mean, you can't even see down through there during the summertime. And I know we've talked about in the past, we talked about last year with Dwayne, maybe, yeah.
That's been, that's been approached, and that's not of a problem.
I, I realize that. That was gonna be late.
I was informed very clearly that before anything happens there, that, that I wouldn't really have said.
By, if you don't mind me asking, by some, a town employee or by some?
No, by the landlord.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We often try to help out, you know, just to do a little bit something, just to increase the deal. I was told that there's only that.
Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough.
Thank you, but no thank you.
Fair enough.
And then, um, because of what the town did last year in terms of sidewalks, that, the proposed budget for sidewalks is down substantially. We appropriated forty, we spent sixty. If you remember, we used some from reserve to do those, and so we're back down to the fifteen thousand dollar range for sidewalks for this year. For a total bottom line of one million, eleven thousand, ninety-six dollars. And if you move over to see what the differences are, the, the, the big things are related to trees, salt, and our, our road maintenance contract for Route seventeen, which was in, in sixteen, seventeen, a similar number, but not budgeted.
Any questions on that from anybody? Not, we'll go on to the town garage, whoops.
One more question. Sidewalks, is, has that patched, by the motel been fixed yet?
No, they have removed, Fairpoint removed their wires off that. The, the delay in removing that pole to fix that thing, um, was related to who had wires, and we did get Fairpoint to move their wires off them, and now, I think, who's left? Time Warner and Central Maine need to move open.
It'd be nice to go and not have that, a mess for another summer. I mean, it's...
Yeah, shortly after we had the last discussion, um, Fairpoint came and moved their wires, so they got off.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going, anything else on highways? Yep, yep.
Crow Mill Stream or East Buck Brook Road, that railing out there, has been very quite seriously. Now, I would think that if somebody hit that that hard, there ought to be an insurance company taking care of that. I don't think it should be the municipality's job to take care of it.
As long as, as long as it was reported, if it wasn't reported, there's not a whole lot we can, we can...
Well, you know, if you, if you looked at it, it's a pretty obvious situation.
Right, but you gotta prove who did it.
I'm thinking that if a vehicle had hit that, it still be hanging there. It was buried up pretty bad.
Okay.
It got hit quite solid, and in fact, the last snowstorm, it was sticking out of the snowbank and back into it, and then they down hit the screen. Crow Mill Stream.
No, I, he, he...
I, I, yeah, Crow Mill Stream, I...
The trouble is, the people that do it don't report the accident. It's hard to collect insurance company for it, but I agree. Insurance should help.
I will badge on my shirt, I go to investigate what happened.
People in the snow, you know, more easily.
Okay, we'll go on to the town garage?
I like this one, it's only two pages.
And it's down two percent?
And it's down two percent. I like it, approved.
Well, the town garage is, um, a, a pretty stable one. We have, um, supplies related to, um, its maintenance, and then building repairs. These are the normal things that need to be done. We have, um, also done some repairs on the sand shed twice that are...
Jay, all your new doors are in, right? That project's complete?
All the ones for that project, yes, so, those are outside.
And did we, was it a new furnace last year? Okay, and that's going good?
Everything's running right.
We like that. This is going way too fast.
Perfect.
But the, um...
Now, the only, the only thing I would say, and again, this isn't, isn't a huge number, but, I mean, the last five years, we've never expended more than about 70% of what we've budgeted. And I didn't know if there's, you know-
For the-
For this town garage budget, and I didn't know if there was-
It primarily has been related, I think, to the heating fuel. That, that's a, a number that, because they had the waste oil furnace, they also budgeted for oil in the event that they don't get the waste oil that's necessary to do it.
And, and I guess what I'm asking is, is there, you know, looking at what we've spent, is there four or $5,000 that we could take out of this? I mean, the number's good, but then put it towards, you know, trees or something like that that we've, that we've fallen behind on our paving? You know, or, or are we cutting it too close and we should wait and see what happens for another year?
The heating, the heating line item is the only one that you could do that with based on the furnace they have in that, because the other items in here, supplies generally, the problem is one repair, one big thing gets stung, $6,500 are going to-
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, that's the one line that's over 100% every time, so, just something, just something to look at.
Yeah, the, the, I did reduce the heating line item by six, by $2,000 this year because of exactly what you're talking about. It's just, it's always, but in the event that the waste oil isn't there, then we'd be buying the others.
We don't generate as much waste oil as you would think. It's not enough to heat the entire garage for the whole-
It's not, no.
We really haven't been receiving as much from the transfer station.
I don't think, I don't think people know you can still bring it there.
Well, we don't hook it to the transfers?
Right.
Yeah.
I, I got some at my house, because I didn't think we could bring it there anymore.
Well, they couldn't for a few months when the building blew over, when the winds arrived.
Last, last winter when it blew over, but it, you can now. So, for anyone out there who has waste oil that needs a place to bring it, can take it to the transfer station.
I thought Dwayne said that they couldn't do that because there was something that-
Too many, too many impediments or something, and they didn't know what they were getting.
Yeah, there's a possibility that somebody could dump antifreeze in the waste oil, and that's why we weren't going to-
Take it from the-
We weren't going to take it from the transfer.
They're not supposed to take any, any, some people aren't nice at all.
I think that's what Dwayne's concern was, is-
Yeah, I think that's what Dwayne's concern was when, that's why he was too keen on transfer station oil.
I was saying, you put a separate room, you put the barrels, it was a little issue.
All right, everybody happy with the town garage? We'll now go on to solid waste.
Can I ask just one question before we leave highway and all that? On your PowerPoint, there was capital improvement, there was 150,000, police fire, they were in the twenties and thirties, and are we looking at a new dump truck or something for capital improvement for highway?
Yeah, capital, because that's on another night that wasn't discussed, but the, that line item is to feed capital reserve with sufficient to, however we do things moving into the future. It isn't that we're necessarily going to spend all 150,000 this year, it's that that's what it takes to meet the, you've, you've done a lease, you've done a-
Okay.
Purchase, and, but yes, there are, there is a backhoe and a truck that are up, and a sidewalk plow.
Skid steer?
No, skid steer, a sidewalk plow.
Sorry, I had to, I apologize.
Which are all, but, which we're looking at the lease arrangement, but that's another night, yes, that is what that is. Okay, solid waste is going down. We've got our, our personnel costs, obviously, the- Clothing, honestly, there are building supplies. I have removed from this budget expenses relating to balers and that kind of thing, which we no longer have to do, which is why, you'll notice under building supplies, that the budget went from 3,500 to 1,350 under that, the things that were removed related The, the really interesting line item in this budget relates to hauling, and it relates to tipping fees. Because of the amount of tonnage that we're not going to be paying $74 a ton for, that we're going to be paying $45 a ton for, there's a fairly significant savings between the $180,000 we budgeted for that line item last year and the $139,760 that we're budgeting for this year. The, even with the slightly higher cost under transportation, and that's only from the $4,800 for the rental of the compactor from, or the leasing of the contract, compactor for zero sort from Casella, but that's as high as it is because we took the hauling cost for solid waste out of it. Monitoring wells and testing is related to our old landfill, and that's a requirement, we can't not do that. The district fee is the fee to the MRC based on the total number of tons that we may have, which I've estimated at 13, which is slightly high, but if it's less, then it will be, it will cost us less. So, that, as compared to a budget of 302,385,000 last year, this year's coming budget would be 261,287.
Any questions on solid waste?
I actually do.
All right.
What, what tires do we mine for trailers? I mean, granted, it's a little bit minor amount of money, but we have, we still have trailers?
Trash trailers have eight, eight tires apiece.
We're still using them, as long as I'm-
We have to haul it, even if what-
I'm good enough. You answered every, that only makes sense. I thought we were hauling, I thought they hauled it on, yeah, no.
They, we, they hauled the-
Been a long day, I'm sorry.
They fly it out.
I fly it out on a helicopter. Been a long day.
All right, anything else on solid waste? Okay, we've got, I think, health officer and general assistance are both on the same budget sheet?
Their, their, health officers, $300 a year that you pay, and that's, that's the, that's what you pay as a stipend to the person who, who does that job. And general assistants, you were budgeted $10,000 last year, the state pays 70% of what you budget. It used to pay 50%, now it'll pay 70% up to a certain amount, but in 2015, 16, we paid a total of $1,328 in general assistance, and thus far this year, we've paid a total of 1,442. So, instead of budgeting 10,000, I've budgeted eight. I, I don't want to take it to zero, but you have to recognize that by budgeting eight, 70% of that would come back in a revenue from the state if we actually ended up-
Spending all the way.
Spending that money. But in 2014, 15, you spent $11,511, and 15, 16, 13, 28, and then 16, 17, thus far, 14, 42. So, it's-
All right.
What did we spend the year before?
$11,511.
$11,000, we spent 1,400 this year?
That was different, that was different.
Different, yeah, I mean, no.
The rules haven't changed.
It was, it was a different town.
No, no, it was, it, no.
Oh, never mind, I'm good.
Health officers, seems low, I mean, not based on the spreadsheet, but- That's valid.
The health officer, yes, that's valid, is only called in if, you know, if there's something that goes beyond the other enforcement or kind of things that we have in terms of, or if there's, were to be some-
I, I guess my question is, does that seem like a fair stipend? It's been 300, $300, 2014, 15, for the-
To be perfectly honest, I didn't think of changing, there's been no request for it, and, and-
Okay.
There's not been a high usage on the part of the community.
Okay. All right, any questions on health officer, general assistance?
Do we have any kind of an idea what the reason is, it's such a decrease in the use of the general assistance?
I'm trying to think of how to answer this correctly. The rules haven't changed, but depending on how, on who applies the rules, and if they're applied by state standards, you can sometimes spend more than other times. It's my understanding that several years ago, that, that interpret, interpretation was a lot more liberal than it has been since 2004. And I can tell you that the state's interpretation is way more restrictive than it was several years ago. Anyone's probably worked helping in the process, and in terms of what they awarded in general assistance, and then were, then audited by the state and were not reimbursed over $100,000 in their expenses because they were, did not apply the rules in the way that the state was.
Yeah, I have to plug into-
So, out of concern, have there been less applications for assistance, or?
There are not a lot of applications for assistance, and I, I know that because our assistant hours are none here when they would be, and we have, we do not have a lot of applications.
I just think that's, that's quite a drastic drop, that he known himself that, you know, like the one-
Any other questions? All right, next week, we'll have another set of these behind during the regular council meeting, correct?
Yes, next-
So, next week, next meeting will be at seven o'clock.
The next session is, is protection, it's police, fire, EMS, and utilities.
And then we'll start at seven o'clock with the regular-
We have the meeting at seven, the school superintendent will be here to talk about education as part of the regular agenda, and following the irregular agenda, the budget will discuss.
Get a nap in. Nothing else, take a motion? Take a motion.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
I'll just draw one.
Yes, sir.